What?
It was established.
Yes.
It was several weeks ago.
You're not related?
This would be so.
Well, we've had one in our neighborhood past year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the Burgess Seale.
Right in our neighborhood.
Where you live?
Oh.
It was before the last plan.
Up by Hilton Lake.
Oh.
Wow.
That we saw in the nature preserve.
Okay.
Okay, Sybelle, are we ready to call the meeting in order?
Are we?
I'll, I'll wait until, have you started your recording? Okay. Very nicely done, so I will call our planning commission meeting of September 5th to order, and I'd ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Schulte?
Here.
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 Good job. Okay, and so in the packet is the minutes from the previous planning commission, and I would ask, are there any changes proposed for those? Hopefully everyone had a chance to review, so if there's no changes and people had a chance to review, a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. We have no hearings this time, so I will turn it over to you for the briefing and discussion.
Good.
So are you gonna bring?
Yes, I'm gonna bring it up. Chair.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. Great to be here with you. I'm Mandy Roberts with OTAC, your project manager for the comprehensive plan update. So this evening's agenda, you wanna go to the next? Is to give a little bit of a review of where we are in the process and some time to discuss some of the comments that we've received on the introduction, community profile, and subareas content, so we'll have a little bit of time to kind of go through some of the comments on that, and then we'll talk about this package that's coming to you tomorrow, which is representative of about half the comprehensive plan content, housing, land use, economic vitality, and transportation elements, and so we will give you some time to review that, and then we'll be discussing it at our August 19th meeting. September, thank you, I was, I've lost a month. And then also we'll just talk about next steps and the upcoming meetings, just orient everybody to that tonight, so. Next slide, please.
Um, I may have opened the wrong one.
Oh, you wanna do?
Yeah, I wanna.
Think the latest, yeah.
Yeah. There was an update to the presentation, and I opened.
Minor update, yeah.
I opened the, the old one, but the title is, everything is still the same.
Yeah, I can keep talking, cuz I have it right here on my laptop, just to talk to you. So just a reminder of where we are, you have reviewed all of the element, goals, and policies, and given us input on those, and as we've been working on the draft elements, we have been addressing your comments, whether they be editorial or more subject matter, and you should see your comments, for the most part, addressed in the content that you'll be getting, which is not final, but, and still draft, so there's still opportunities for you to comment and for us to make additional revisions before we go to council. We have received some commissioners' comments on the introduction, community profile, subareas content, we'll be talking about that tonight, and then we'll give you a little bit of an overview of what you'll be seeing in the land use, housing, economic vitality, and transportation elements. So I think the best way to do this is, we, we received a range of comments from commissioners, and some of them are editorial. No worries about that, you know, if it's capitalization, or organization, or flow, which Commissioner Schulte had some of those, we'll take care of those suggestions, so I would say let's just open it up for kind of your general observations, or key, anything that you felt maybe was a missing element, or a red flag that you wanted to make sure we corrected in your review of the introduction, and vision, and community profile and subareas content, and I do have printouts of some of the comments we received, so I can kind of direct us through that, but also just hoping you have recollection of what you reviewed, and what, you know, what comments you had, so we can just bring those to the floor for discussion with everyone. Yeah.
I just had some, just more, that we really gotta explain it to the layman term, I felt there was a lot of jargon and stuff in there without explaining it from like here down to here, that we kind of need to add in this introduction and vision statement, and kind of, if you didn't know what a comprehensive plan was, and what this does, this, you'd be lost in these words.
Okay.
And so really think about if someone with the fifth grade education level were to read this and doesn't understand how civics and government work, they could understand why this document is important.
Okay.
That's just kind of what I thought we need to work on with stuff here, and I think a lot of that can be done with some visuals or graphics that I gave suggestions on. That was just kind of, if you didn't know about this process already, you were lost in why they care about this document, so that's just what I think is an overarching thing to think about, if someone's never heard of a comprehensive plan, this introduction has to tell them why they should care.
That's great, great point.
Other comments? Questions?
Maybe we don't need to have a lot of discussion, Commissioner Abrams, I know you had some general comments, did you wanna address any of those with the commission? Okay, I think I will say that pertaining to some of your comments, I, I think I'll do a little bit of a response, because I think some of the information you were looking for is in the comprehensive plan as a whole, but you haven't yet seen all of it and the background, so I just don't, didn't want you to worry too much about some of that, it's, it will be in there, so. I'll, I'll put together a response through staff back to you for that, yeah.
I'm just looking through my notes here, I had one about when it came to the priorities and whether there was, should have been one around connecting to the Mill Creek Town Center or not.
Yeah.
Right, and it was related to the Pirates of.
For the sub, for the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea, yes, I saw that.
Yeah, there's one.
That's great, that's a great suggestion, and we were actually hoping that we would generate some suggestions, new suggestions for the subareas through the planning commission, so.
And then there was something about, there was a mention about what a, a project advisory committee in the document there, and I don't recall what that is, is that this separate from the subarea that previous?
It was related to the subarea planning process.
The one that you were in, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that, that's what it was called?
You just see, and I agree, just as Commissioner Schulte was saying, we need to connect the dots for people that may not know what that is, so we can add some background in.
Yeah, and then one last one that I recall was, or two, two was when I was looking through the section around the East Gateway, I remember, when I was looking through that document, it felt like it almost implied that you hadn't built anything, we're in the process of building something, when, we're, we're pretty much, you've done everything that's in that section.
Okay.
For the most part, like, at least the way I, when I read, I'm like, I know what the actual answer is, but when I read it, it doesn't read that way. It feels like we're, we're gonna go do this, we're gonna go, I may do things, I think with the road, and a couple other things, and.
I see.
And then one last one was about, and I guess I don't have the full document in front of me, was that the growth is related to this, specifically to the subareas. And maybe, I'd have to go back and look at the document to see exactly how the, the context of that, but I, I do recall seeing a note for myself on that. You might, maybe you have the actual document with the, exactly what section it is there.
I have your comments here, can you direct me to?
The phone was, I get, in my, in my, my phone, I can't see where, what specific area, I was hoping you might have it in front of you, it's like what area that comment went to, that I was, I guess had my comment that we need, we need to be specific, that we need to be specific that those areas of the sub, that the subareas as it relates to growth. I like those specific areas that, that growth is gonna be.
I'll, yeah, I'll look at that.
Other comments, questions?
I suppose one question I had that wasn't just editorial in nature, I wanted to make sure, cuz I'm looking at my comments. Under some of the things about comprehensive plan engagement summary, you had the city's tour with planning commissioners and city council, and I'm trying to, I don't think any of us went on the tour of Woodenville.
That was city council and staff.
Okay.
So not planning commissioners, and that might be our misunderstanding, so it was just council and staff, not planning commission, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I just, yeah, just because that would have been a great opportunity for us to really, uh.
Yeah.
Get a lot of feedback with them and understand where they're coming from and what we're thinking about, but that was not, that wasn't done.
Maybe the next tour.
Okay.
So, the, the, I'm curious about that, is there, there gonna be a possibility for the commission members to review that? And go there with representatives of the council or yourselves to discuss that after we've seen it?
You mean to do another tour?
Yeah.
Yeah, depending on.
Depends on if everyone thinks it's beneficial or not.
I, I think it's beneficial, but it would depend on schedule and availability of commissioners, but yeah, I, that's, that's a great idea.
And they went to ten more, were you on that, Sybelle?
Yeah.
Cuz it wasn't just Woodenville, right?
No, Woodenville, ten more, and.
Both, and Bothell.
Bothell, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, perhaps if city councillors have already been, maybe it's just a planning commission tour then of those, yeah. Okay. Great.
Other questions?
All right, well, thank you for your comments, we will get those integrated, and just for, to remind everyone, we are working on integrating comments and edits. We're also working on code modifications jointly with city staff, we're working together on that process, there are a number of code amendments that need to be made from the state legislative directives that have been passed, so we're working through those, and then there are some modifications that are needed to support the comprehensive plan, including, and I wanna be clear and get this on the record, including some changes to zoning, and the zoning changes proposed are not as expressed in the recent article in the, what's that paper called? In the Mill Creek View, so I just want to be clear that, and I've got a map here, they'll show you in a minute, that what we're proposing are zoning changes to, I guess focus the area of growth in the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea, not citywide. There are a few land use changes in, on other parcels in the city that we'll look at, but based on past meetings with the planning commission and city council, we've talked a lot about the Mill Creek Boulevard area as being a receptor for growth, and the area where we can meet our allocated targets for both housing and jobs, and as an area that's close in proximity to bus rapid transit, services, grocery, restaurants, anything else, and also connecting to the light rail system, which just opened last week, super exciting. We have all determined that this is an appropriate area for us to look at for growth, and so our approach is going to be to extend the zoning and development regulations that are similar to those that are in town center to the south to encompass this area, which would allow for more capacity in this area. We need to make a few changes to the zoning, to the planned community business zone, and we're probably gonna change the name of it to Town Center, and you know, we don't need to change the heights to meet our capacity levels, but we do need to, there's a really odd residential density requirement in that zone that, that doesn't really fit with mixed-use development, or even some of the development that is in Town Center, so we're gonna need to change that. So that's really the, a big focus of our zoning changes, and I just wanted to get that on the record here, yes.
So south of 164th, behind QFC, there's open space. Uh, and also on Bothell Everett, there's a huge parcel of land which is fenced in, which I understand is something that's being earmarked for future school development? Is that true?
The large fenced piece of property is owned by the Everett School District.
Everett School District, okay, is that something that anyone is aware that they're actually gonna be able to reuse that?
I'm not sure, we, do we need to look into that? I, I know that that area, it has a lot, even though it looks like it's open space, it has a lot of critical area concerns, wetlands, so we, we did take a look at that, there's like some washed-out stormwater holding ponds in there, and it wasn't really seen as an area where we could focus a lot of growth because of that. But I, you know, maybe in the future it could be further studied to understand property owners' interests in that area and what's happening, so, yeah.
The, the pressing question, are those the ones just east of Bothell Everett Highway, south of Seal Hill Road?
Uh, well, what I'm thinking is, and I think we've talked about this previously, there's land behind QFC.
Oh yeah, that, that is a washed-out stormwater facility?
Yeah, and then there is land going south on Bothell Everett Highway on the east side, where it's, as Matt indicated, that's totally fenced in. And it's, it appears from, you know, driving on Bothell Everett, that that's a very large piece of land. I have no idea what's inside of it. And I did hear that from Sybil's predecessor that the land behind QFC is untouchable. I'm just curious if for rezoning, is it going to be untouchable?
Yeah, the area behind QFC, yeah, that's the washed-out stormwater facility, there may be an opportunity to utilize that for park space where we co-locate the park facilities with the stormwater pond. But probably can't build anything there. And then those school properties east of Bothell Everett Highway, they're actually just outside of the city limits, so we can't rezone those, they're just outside of our jurisdiction, they're in our MOOGA, so eventually we could annex them. And Steph is also very curious what's gonna happen, cuz it's just, yeah, there's prime parcels there doing nothing at the moment.
I didn't realize that that area was outside of city limits.
Yeah, just over the line.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, so, Sybelle, would you mind changing the slide? Thank you so much, so just to, again, to kind of recap on the changes that we're making that you'll see in these elements that are coming to you soon, either tomorrow or Monday. You know, there are regulatory changes that are happening at the state level, so we've had to look at how provisions align with the state legislation, we've had to also look at Vision 2050, which is Puget Sound Regional Council's plan for the region, how we're aligning with that, and then Snohomish County countywide planning policies, and and they all have checklists, so we've had to go through the checklist and make sure that we're aligning with all of their checklist requirements. Part of the state regulations also indicate we need to take a look at some of the best available science related to critical areas requirements. We are taking a look at that, there are some additional work that staff will do, those actually don't, those changes don't have to be made in full until next year, so we'll do some of that, but some of it might get deferred into next year. And then, of course, we're taking into account comments that we've received from you and from city staff, and there will be kind of two separate sets of documents for you to review, one that's the goals and policies, which you've already seen, and then one that represents the background reports for each of the elements. We have updates to maps, figures, and tables, and we've tried to retain content that was in the past plan when it makes sense. However, there were some write-ups about issues that really were removed because it was going into a lot of detail that you would normally see in like a zoning code or a regulatory document, not a plan. So we've tried to simplify, reduce overlap, and make things more clear. Let's see, what else can I say? I think that really covers it. We do, we were talking with staff recently about how we, you guys will recall in the last comprehensive plan, we had the streetscapes element. So we, we are removing that element, as you know, we've talked about that in the past, but we are gonna take a look at that and understand, you know, what of those standards need to be integrated into code, and so that's not a requirement for the comprehensive plan to have that done by the end of the year, but what we've talked about is it makes a lot of sense with the continuation of planning in the Mill Creek Boulevard area, there's gonna be a lot of thinking about streets and streetscapes, so it makes sense to take a look at that at that point and integrate any additional zoning requirements related to street, street standards next year, when you, when you're looking at Mill Creek Boulevard in more detail, so just wanna give you a heads up about that, too. Any questions about any of that? Okay. So I know there's a ton of content on this slide, but you don't, we, I'm not gonna read it all to you tonight, and you don't have to read it all in this sitting, but basically, we're just telling you, what are the Growth Management Act requirements and RCW requirements that we need to address in the housing element? That we have addressed these in goals and policies. We've also, you know, again, these are kind of the checklist items, we've identified that we have sufficient land for housing to meet your targets, that's part of what we'll confirm in the housing elements and, and these other elements here. There have been analyses on the middle housing requirements that were done previous to when we started on the comp plan update. There have been some policies and regulations that address racially disparate impacts, displacement, and exclusion, which are part of new state legislation. So we're capturing all of that, and an example of what you'll see in the housing element when you get it is shown on the right-hand side, so it will be in track changes, so you can track along with what changes we're making from, from the last version of the comprehensive plan, we typically do that to leave a record from one plan to the next of what's being changed. Any comments on that before I move on to the next review? So, land use element, this has to do with updating the land use, and we will be updating the zoning maps as well, and addressing what I just spoke about in terms of the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea being a place for allocating our growth. And we're considering new names of the Town Center, and whether, whether we call it Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea or Town Center South Gateway, Gateway District, we already have an East Gateway District, so that wouldn't be appropriate. I don't know if anybody has any great ideas, but kind of this is the the last chance this month to make some bold statements about if we wanna come up with a new name for Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea, which it's kind of confusing, and people really don't know what we mean. So think about that when you're reviewing this, we also have, we are not going to have separate policies for each subarea goals and policies, because we felt that would create too much redundancy with the goals and policies that we already have throughout the elements, so instead we have those key priorities. So the next time you see those key priorities in the subareas section, which will be on the next packet that you receive, not this first one, but the next packet, if you wanna add any priorities for the subareas, Commissioner Burindo was talking about adding, you know, making sure we're adding a priority of connecting with the subarea to Town Center, that would be a great example of things that we might wanna add, and even for Town Center as a subarea, are there things that we wanna prioritize there? Even though it's, it's mostly developed and built out, but there, are there new things we wanna make sure we're thinking about? Like economic vitality, you know, for example, so just think about that as you review. Here's the current and future land use map in process. We are still, this is draft, so we're still working on this a bit, you can see the map on the left is the current land use map, and then the map on the right is our future map, and you know, the big area of changes I've been describing to you is Town Center is now extending to the south and encompassing the Mill Creek Boulevard area. And whether we call that all Town Center, or we call it something else, is still, you know, a decision to be made, but that's, that's really what we're changing in this plan, yeah.
Question on that, I do see in this map, on the current land use map, we have a, down in what I'm gonna call the new Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea.
Yeah.
There's red, and then there's this white square that it looks like it's outside of the boundaries of the city. In the future land use map, that looks like it's included, is that an error?
That is an error that we need to correct.
I, I just wanted to make sure, oh, are we picking up one parcel of land there, like? Are we?
No, I think that's a church or something, I'm not sure, but we, we need to correct that, Commissioner Breyall, so we will.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and then I know there's another change that staff is considering, do you wanna describe that, Sybelle, maybe point it out for land use change?
Yeah, so neighborhood business, so the corner of 35th and Seattle Hill Road, we have had a lot of interest in that section, but because of the the code for that specific district, it's really hard, and there's a wetland on that site, too, people really find it difficult to develop, so that lot has been vacant for a while, so it's, it's up for discussion to, for us to take a look at our code and what will be the best and highest use for that property. And then, Mount Lee Square, not Mount Lee Square, um. What's, what's that?
So, so Sybelle, to back up just a minute.
Yes.
Seattle L Road and 132nd.
No, 35th.
A 35th. Okay. You know, Buffalo, Buffalo Espresso.
Buffalo Espresso.
And like that.
Buffalo Espresso, yeah.
There's that lot that's currently, it kind of looks like a, it's, 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 it's a parking lot, but it's not a parking lot. That's actually where there was gonna be, I think, like a town home, like a pretty small town home setup that.
Town homes have been developed.
Yep, okay.
This, this is a different one.
Oh, another one.
That was gonna be like, I don't know, six units, or something like that, it was, it was small, but it was gonna fit in there, and I guess it didn't come to fruition, for whatever reason, there'd been a land use placard up for a while, and then it, I haven't seen it happen. Yeah, we can hear you.
And then the other site that we're looking at would be this corner right here. Um, back in 2018 or 19, there was a proposal for Doggy Daycare. Um, that has not panned out, of course, but also looking at best and highest use for that property. The property owner has been in conversation with staff to rezone it to mixed-use, high-density area. There's a lot of homework that needs to be done on the developer's end, but we staff can support it. Housing will be in need for us moving forward, so it is something that we can take a look at, and also I don't know if I should.
I ju, I wanna ask you about that, so that corner, we're talking about the south and east side of the corner between Bothell Everett Highway and 132nd.
Yes.
Correct, and so that's like, there's Lowe's?
Yes.
And then there's an electrical substation? And then there's an electrical substation or something like that?
Yeah.
Then there's, I think what we're talking about, the Doggy Daycare was gonna go in there and then there's like the Tire Center.
Yes.
Right? Okay, so. And the preschool is the next one down. So that's where we're talking about, is that part of the intersection. Okay, and.
There's a huge wetland next to the.
Yeah.
Yeah. And anywhere here that isn't developed, you have to assume it's got a natural wetland that's protected and that's why it's not already developed.
So can I ask about that? Because I know there'd been previous discussions about that parcel and at the time. It was, are we gonna spend staff time? That's a large parcel in there. A lot of, does have wetland, a lot doesn't. But would we do a rezone look at the whole, the Sprouts parking lot, for lack of a better name, the Lowe's property and those? And so are you saying we're going away from that? Now we're looking at an individual rezone of that one piece?
So what was gonna, well, what I was gonna say is after the subarea planning is done. The next session for us to really take a look at would be the whole Sprouts area.
Yes.
We uh staff, well, we think that this property has been. Um, on hold for a while and the property owner is anxious to do something with it. Now. Looking at what we can do, I think moving forward, housing, mixed-use housing would be. The best use, highest use for that property. Looking at the trajectory of where the city is going, what we need and what this whole section of um. Sprout would be, that would be housing in that areas too. It's a high-density corridor. Um, the part that we have to be careful with is uh in and out of uh traffic. Um, but that is a DOT, um, it's under DOT per view and um. Yeah, so in terms of the homework, there's a lot of homework that, that would have to be done, but. For now, it's being considered as a, while we are considering. Resoning it to mixed-use high-density.
Part of this comp plan, is that what you're saying? Or a?
Yeah.
But just the daycare, like daycare lot, right?
It's just the Matley Square property. Well, I think we also, we did consider adding the, the power station. And um Le Schwap, because those are adjacent properties and you don't wanna just zone one. One piece. Um, the substation will never get developed regardless. Le Schwap might, but you never know.
I guess the only thing uh uh I would wanna make a comment there is, uh before you end up spending too much time and energy. It might be worthwhile to bring that one up as a discussion point with council as to. Whether they want to have the uh housing there. I, I worry about, I worry that you'd spend a lot of effort and then. We end up in a situation similar to the property across the street from the uh um Arena Sports, right, right?
It is, we actually have it on city, preparing for it to be on today's council agenda.
Cause yeah, it would be unique from a traffic standpoint, cause we don't have direct access for any high-density housing onto the. Principal arterial there anyway.
So Sybil, are you doing a safety analysis? Because it residential land. Next to a substation?
Yeah, that, that would be part of the developer's homework. It's, it, yeah. That wouldn't be.
And what's happening in the area surrounding Doom, in that Dumas area, that area? Which used to be a, gonna be for a swimming pool?
Seven Seas.
It's uh, it's for sale.
Yeah, it's for sale.
It's, it's for sale now.
Seven Seas, it was children's swimming?
Swimming, yeah, yeah.
I understand that's now going in at Friday, that it closed down at um, near the Safeway on One Thirty Second.
Yeah, but the Seven Seas is under sale.
So they own that, but they're looking to sell.
So then that's also potentially additional vacant land?
What is that zone?
What is that zoned currently? That, that particular CB, okay, so community business as well?
Yeah.
So that's the same as what's in the Town Center?
Wait, I'm sorry, before I say a CB, let me identify it.
This is a land use map that we have up, not the zoning. Here's a zoning, sorry, that might be more helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's zoned community business. Um, that's the same zoning as in Sprouts. Uh Town Center is planning community business.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I can see why we're thinking about changing the naming. That's just, it's close enough that I think it's the same.
I ask you just a question on the process in Washington State. Um, so we, we developed this comprehensive plan. We do our best guess at where we want things to go, but. An individual property owner or applicant for a new project to cha- to do a land use development. They still have the right to come in and propose something that's alternative to our comprehensive plan. And then the Planning Commission, City Council could do a zoning amendment at that time for.
And it would also require a comprehensive plan amendment.
Amendment, so, but, but you know, we can do our best guess, but if someone says and comes as a brilliant idea that we haven't thought of. There's a process for them to do that. If we think, uh or City Council thinks as, as a, if it's still would. That idea is, would be beneficial and a good use of that land, we can still do that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And the main thing we need to make sure that our comp plan done is that we have our allocation shares for. Housing and jobs, which we put all into one subarea, so these other little individual parcels. Would be extra stuff from what we're legally required to do right now.
Yeah, we would be over the housing numbers.
True, to some extent though, I would say our land capacity analysis kind of looked at probabilities of. Redevelopment in some other locations happening as well, so we did take that into account. And even with that, we still needed.
Yeah.
Sufficient growth in the subareas, so, yeah. But I don't think, since these were not, these parcels that we're talking about were not zoned for residential, I don't think we would have. Those, those would have been more like, oh, jobs would go here, you know, so, yeah.
And then in that process, if, so let's say one of these parcels that we currently aren't putting our. Required housing density into, can we? Bank that in some sort to go to future requirements in, in another tier that'd come down from the state? Or is that not allowed? That if you do a better job in some time period than your required.
You'll take a new, so every ten years you need to update your comprehensive plan and. Every five years you need to kind of take a look at it where you are. But ea- at either of those intervals, you would do another land capacity analysis to kind of figure out where, where are we now? Um, how much growth has happened in the last five or ten years and how much space do we have now compared to what our new targets are? So you'll get new targets in ten years, but you'll take an interim look at it in five years.
But do we get a say, like if our target, let's say, I don't remember the numbers, is like twenty-five hundred? And we actually, in the next ten years, do, do five thousand, would that. Would we be able to bank that twenty-five hundred to the next ten-year goal?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't work exactly like that, but when um, when the county allocates new targets, they will take into consideration. Kind of what your growth rates have been. And if you are exceeding them, they might even increase your allocation for the next twenty years, so.
So kind of like, we don't gain anything from being better than we're supposed to and we might actually get penalized if we go over?
It could be that way because they're looking at where growth is happening and. And factoring that in when they allocate, you know?
It also matters where there's still developable land.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And that's why we have to do the land capacity analysis as well. And they do that. They do the buildable lands analysis as part of their allocations too, so.
One other comment, the Matley Square, um, which is the site, they are thinking of submitting. A comprehensive plan update to that site regardless, so they, they are moving forward with it. So FYI, it would be part of the agenda in the yeah, near future.
So question then, I think it was about a year ago now that we had looked at. A, an update for zoning for a specific parcel at like Hundred and Thirty-S sixth and uh Bothell Everett Highway. Uh, there is currently a house there and it was gonna become something like a optician's office is what I remember basically the proposal being. Was that a single parcel that we also looked at updating the zoning on that? Okay, so there's precedent for that.
And at that point, we said we were gonna wait for the comp plan, it includes that, but I don't see it on our map.
It would be the update that we.
It says future zoning on, on.
Yeah, and I don't see that one.
Oh, so that was One Thirty-S sixth and what? I'm sorry, let me make.
One Thirty-S sixth and Bothell Everett Highway.
Okay.
Uh, it's not Trillium, it's the next one up. There's one that, there's one that goes to uh the middle school and then One Thirty-S sixth is the one that goes to the high school, it's the one that goes to the high school. It's Dumas to One Thirty-S sixth, it's where Dumas turns into One Thirty-S sixth crossing Rockford Highway.
I'm at Dumas.
Yes, across, yeah, across Bothell Everett Highway from the.
The Shell.
Shell gas station, yeah. And at the same catty corner to um Mill Creek Sports.
Okay. And um, it needs both a, a comp plan designation change and a zoning change?
It, it already went through.
It's already happened.
Oh, we just need to get it on the map. Okay, got it, okay.
Okay, so that is in, it is supposed to be in here, I guess.
Yes, it, it, uh, yeah, we need to correct the coloring of that, yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Actually have one more zoning change that I'm considering. That's a um. For historic reasons, Mill Creek has two low-density residential zones. There's the PRD seventy-two-hundred zone, just primarily. Um, the original MCCA area. And then surrounding that, there's um the LDR zone. They're substantially similar. There, there are only minor differences and the only reason they are, there are two different zones is because. Of how annexations happened in the county and the city was developed. Um, I'm gonna propose combining them into one zone, so we just have one low-density residential zone. That'll make it easier for staff to review because while they're very, while the two existing zones are very similar, there's a couple small changes. Uh, I mean, some differences between them, such as the, a few feet of setback differences. But uh, I think it would make sense to just combine them into one low-density residential zone, so you'll see that in those different changes. But I'm, I'm, I'm imagining um that, that the, the only change, the only difference between them, just setbacks and the minimum lot size. Probably averaged or probably closer to the PRD seventy-two-hundred zone. Um, essentially the idea is it's not gonna cause a lot of changes, it was make processing permits faster and easier for residents to understand because. We'll just have one zone instead of two that are very similar, but not quite the same.
Is this tied to some other work? I remember a year or two ago, we were doing around corner lots and the setbacks and different zoning that. A bigger house had a better setup for the setbacks that, or the MCCA had a better setback that um set up. And teams, like people couldn't build a fence along the side of their yard, right?
Exactly. Uh, in one zone, the front setback is fifteen feet, in the zone, other zone it's twenty feet, and so that would um. That we want change, we'd harmonize between them.
Can I ask? You said you would harmonize, is that going to fifteen or going to twenty? Are you gonna make a presentation to us on that then?
There'll be a presentation, yeah. Um, I think, I mean, I have suggestions, my preference would be the fifteen feet for that one. With the caveat being that garages must be at least twenty feet, so you don't have cars sticking past the driveway into the sidewalk.
Something to note was, since those are. Uh HOA associations with their own covenants, we could change it as a city, but the covenants, if they're not changed, that's still how those requirements. It will be moot. Cause if you live in those areas, you'd need the city approval, but you also need the HOA approval, so. If you're thinking of that, you might wanna get input from the HOA's boards on if they would. Agree to those kind of cohesiveness things, just to not open a political storm with those HOAs.
Yeah, good point. And actually, the um, the PRD seventy-two-hundred zone, which is primarily where. The MCCA is, um, is actually the less restrictive of the zones, interestingly enough. So I, I don't see a lot of. Pushback by harmonizing them because the zone, which is primarily HOAs, actually is less restrictive um at the moment.
So is, um, do either of these zones have any of the uh? When you're talking about setbacks and I suppose easements as well, is that why we have differences of sidewalks in the different neighborhoods? As to why some of them have the dots out on the road as compared to sidewalks uh up on the land?
Uh, it doesn't have to do with the zoning so much as the, the design standards, the standard plans in place at the time, so. The original, you know, around Mill Creek Boulevard and Village Green Drive, those were developed uh when it was a part of the county. And so they use county standards, that's why they don't have sidewalks. Um, and then other areas were developed. Later on, under Mill Creek, before we had more uh. They were developed, yeah, some, some have like very small planting strips and that was, um, you can't do that now. Now we have standards that are. Minimum five feet of planting strips, for instance, and sidewalks, uh, what did I say? That wouldn't happen now because our design standards specify, you have to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Um, but when those developed, those weren't in place. But it's not a zoning thing, it's more of a, a standard plan. That our, our engineering department creates.
Alright, thank you for the history lesson.
Other questions on that?
So we do something in the conference, you plan to sort of cover some of these. Does, and that's gotta be done by the end of the year. Does the zoning have to be done by the end of the year or is that a fall? I see I had nod back there.
Yeah, the zoning will, will happen the same time as we adopt the comprehensive plan, so the, the comprehensive plan actually includes the zoning and land use.
Okay, thank you.
Commission, any other questions or?
Hey, why don't we move on to transportation quickly? I think we can go through the rest of this fairly quickly. Um, in the transportation element. Again, you'll see a track changes version, like you see on the right there. The, one of the biggest areas of updates that's a state requirement is providing multimodal level of service standards. For locally-owned arterials and active transportation facilities, so. Um, Trans, Transpo has been working with us on this element and has given. Presentations to commission on some of these changes, so just a reminder that those are the types of things that you'll see coming. And um. They've done the same thing that we've done for land use and housing and that they've looked at all of the existing. Requirements at the state, regional and county level and have um. Kind of done their own checklist of what needs to be done for the transportation element and made those updates. And we get some new maps, which is kind of nice. Um, all the maps will have more of a cohesive look with colors and symbology. So you will be able to look at, look at those, including this new functional street classification map. It's not changing. Um, classifications per se, uh. It does look like the minor arterial is.
The collector arterial, like One Forty-Eighth in front of Mill Creek, is that an error on the map or has it never been classified as a collector? The purple line, it's.
Yeah, I see that and One Fifty-Third as well.
Yeah, both of those function as it, so I'm not questioning how they're classified, I just, I.
One Fifty-Third and I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Hundred and Forty-Eighth from Thirty-Fifth to the west.
Okay.
And then there's that one that I always think is Seattle Hill Road. Further south.
Yeah, and you've added, that is the old Seattle Hill Road.
Yeah, old Seattle Hill Road, that's why I think that.
Is now, those are all three shown as collectors and on the old map they aren't, and I.
Okay, it might, it might be now that they've studied those and that they're upgrading them to collector status because of the traffic volumes. But I will confirm that, so, yeah. So the question is why now collector status versus before? There's not a legend, so I don't know what they were before, but yeah.
So it'd be, yeah, it'd be local road or non-artorial collectors.
Certainly, so there's a couple of it, One Forty-Eighth and One Fifty-Third, I could, well, One Forty-Eighth, I could definitely see that. One Fifty-Third, I'm not sure, that's what it factually is, but I don't know.
And then this, the old Seattle Hill Road.
And the old Seattle Hill Road is even less. For, for density, den- density, et cetera, of.
Well, cause it'll drive a, a, a design standard on that, and that road hasn't been fully improved all the way.
It really hasn't. I mean, cause it's got a nature center.
Yeah.
Right next to it that is.
Okay. We'll consult with Transpo on that and bring back some answers to, at the next meeting.
Any other questions? Transportation? Okay, thank you.
Alright, and then economic vitality is a completely new element. All right, and then economic vitality is a completely new element. Uh, so you'll see references to what the importance of why we now have an economic vitality element for Mill Creek, and one of the uh key areas of uh information in this element has to do with jobs, and our jobs target of seven-hundred-and-thirty-six new jobs by twenty forty-four, and where we're anticipating those would occur will be part of what's shown here, and the types of jobs and job sector, so there's some data that you'll see around that. And you have seen that before in presentations by Leland Consulting Group, but we're just gonna be pulling it into the actual element for content, so. And just a reminder, I already said this, but you know, we are looking to make sure that we're aligning with PSRC and county policies. And so there were, you know, certain um twenty-fifteen economic development summary statements, but now we're going to be realigning those with regional and county policies. So you see kind of the difference between these two lists, and you'll see that in the economic vitality element when you, when you look at that. We have, this is a slide that I think we had in one of the previous um meetings as well, but just to kind of confirm you know, what is the city's role in economic development, or economic vitality, as we're now calling it? And uh, we we'll just provide this kind of clarity in the transporta- or in the economic vitality element, excuse me, as well, so.
Question for you, do, does the city have a policy or ordinance regarding um busking?
Are are we, are we doing, are people doing busking?
Well, there are sometimes some people playing an accordion or something like that at a corner. But I, it was, when we talk about place-making in plazas and walkable areas, I could easily see that is, because for instance, uh down at the waterfront at the um Pike Place, uh, there are like busking permits, or there's like a lot, you can sign up for a time or something like that as an artist. And right now, I know that we have pianos out on Main, for instance, which is kind of almost the same thing, but nobody's expected to get tips, and nobody's like signing up for a time, right? It's, there's a piano here, sit down and play or don't. Enjoy the piano, you know, which is great. And I'm definitely in favor of it, it's great. But I just wonder if we have anything regarding busking, either one enabling or regulating in any way, or disallowing it entirely. I don't, I don't know what the city has. And I look at that as potentially a part of small business thriving in place-making kinda thing. Is there a way that we look at that? I d- I don't know. Maybe something to think about and not necessarily respond right now.
Well, that section of the code is handled by the clerk. So I'm not quite familiar, but it is something to look at.
Okay, thank you.
So are we, any other comments on economic vitality before we kinda cover next steps? Really good. All right. So we meet again on September nineteenth. Appreciate everybody adding an extra meeting to your September, thank you. Um, cause we're get, we're on the home stretch here. Um, so at that meeting, we'll be talking about the rest of the elements that you'll be getting for review, parks, rec, open space is one element, capital facilities, utilities, and environment. And we will also be talking about the draft amendments. We've done a bit of that tonight, giving you a little bit of a preview, but we'll have more information on the amendments to regulations and code um for that meeting as well. And any comments that you might have on the, on this first half, these first elements you're gonna be getting? We wanna get those from you prior to that next meeting, and we can talk about them at that next meeting as well. So then, what we'll be doing is um